Hamburger.
Here.
Councilmember Keel.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Handy.
Present.
And we have a corn.
Awesome. Everybody please stand in the can for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we had the March minutes in your pocket. Entertaining motion to accept those.
Motion.
Second.
Scott Marsh and Martin, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that one carried. Moving into administrative matters, I'd like to call on our new chief, Newby, to give us our quarterly police department update. Congratulations on your first update, Chief.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I don't know if you all have had time to review the the report that was sent to you. If you haven't, don't waste your time. Because I'll be honest with you, reports like this was sent to me basically as an example for what you guys normally get. And reports like this are basically only good if you run out of toilet paper. That's what they're good for. And the reason I say that is because reports like this, you can pick and choose. I can look at burglaries from the first quarter of last year and compare it to the first quarter of this year. Well, if the burglaries are down this year, well, that's going to be the report that I want to show you so I can sit here and tell you crime is down. So it's not giving you a true look at what's actually going on in our city. So what my plan is, I've started keeping stats of what's going on in our city, whether it be catalytic converter thefts, police pursuits, assaults on our officers. And I'm going to bring those numbers to you and I'm going to show you exactly what's going on in our city. And I'm not only going to show you the types of crimes that we're dealing with, I'm going to show you dispositions of these crimes. We've had a lot of cases recently. I know you've seen in the news that are being dismissed at an alarming rate. I'm going to find out why these cases are being dismissed, whether it's because of something the police department did. Maybe it's something the victim wants, I don't know. But I'm going to find out and I'm going to fix the problem. Because if these cases keep getting dismissed, these people are still going to go out and commit these crimes. So I hate that I don't have that type of report for you tonight. Again, I'm a week and a half into it, but I can assure you, moving forward, you all will be getting reports that you want to hear. I'm not going to waste your time with bar graphs and things like that. You will have a true understanding after the next report of what's going on in our city and what's going on in the justice system with the crimes that are being committed in our city. And then once you have the information that you truly need to hear, then we can all truly start working together to bring the crime down in our city. So I will bring you what you need to work with. And that's going to give me the information that I need to work with. So that's my report. Any questions?
Any questions for the chief?
I have one question.
Yes, for sure.
You've been here a week and a half, chief. Is there anything you've seen that you don't have that you need to be successful in your job?
No, right now, I mean, we're working on getting manpower. We have had, since I came in, we have had a lot of applications coming in from laterals. Which lateral, for those of you that don't know, those are officers that have already been to the academy that are wanting to come back. Whether they're either retirees or they're from another law enforcement agency. And we've got some that are interested in going to the academy. So no, sir, right now, I've got everything that I need. What's going to help me is the manpower. But the applications are starting to come in. We've already started the process of getting some of those folks hired. So our numbers are already about to start coming up.
Good deal, thank you.
Yeah, I feel the same way. You know, for my input, I'd like to, and I feel like probably everybody feels the same way. We want to do whatever we can do to make Hopkinsville a sterling example in our region for law enforcement and that. It wasn't real comforting to hear that the report that we received just put it to the side. But I was just, my question is about COVID. I'd had a couple of constituents ask, you know, during COVID, it had been reported that some, you know, law enforcement judgments, those kinds of things were kind of being relaxed during that period. And I just wanted to find out if there's any truth to that. And if there is, is that season over? Can we get back to the regular law enforcement stopping people that are driving 50 in our 35 zones and so forth?
So we are back to normal. We're not going on any COVID restrictions right now. Now, I can't answer for all the other departments, but the only thing that really got lax, from my perspective at the department that we were in, we tried to handle more calls for service that we could, like legal advices, instead of actually going to the residence, we would try to answer those over the phone. But that's really the only thing that we really changed at that time. And now everybody's gone back to in-person. As far as the court systems, the biggest problem that I saw during COVID was people were, they were getting attorneys from out of state or even from another city because the attorneys didn't have to drive to Hopkinsville to be here in person. They could handle it over Zoom.
I see.
So a lot of the attorneys were just just continuing, continuing, continuing and trying to get stuff resolved over Zoom. Now, once COVID ended and they went back to in-person court, cases were starting to get resolved because these attorneys were having to come travel and actually be here.
Right.
So they were trying to get these cases resolved to cut down on their travel time. So that was the big change that I saw during COVID as far as the court systems go.
Okay.
But I didn't see the cases being prosecuted any more lax or worse during COVID.
Okay, all right, thank you, chief, thank you.
Anything else? Chairman. And chief, now before you leave the podium, this is coming, you know, from me personally. There was an incident in my neighborhood last Friday that affected a lot of folks. Had to shut down South Main Street for an extended period. I think everybody's seen the news, what happened. I was, you know, the personal effect it had on me, I couldn't get to my house, you know. If that's the worst thing that happens to me today, that's a pretty good day for me. But, you know, I was kind of standing outside the perimeter waiting for the thing to play out. And I just wanted, from somebody that was there and watching and seeing what was going on, first off, your PSOs and the guys you had directing traffic, a lot of people were actually getting lost. You know, didn't realize until I was standing with them. People cutting through town that weren't from here, they're telling them how to get around everything. They did a great job. They dealt with, as I was standing there, a few people that were unhappy not to be able to drive through there.
Sure.
But the overall, the way that played out in professionalism, I saw you onsite. I saw a lot of your leadership that day. And I just want to thank you for the way that played out because we had somebody that probably needed a little help, have the ability to get some help. And I appreciate what you did there for my neighborhood personally and my neighbors. And I just want to tell you thank you for that.
I appreciate it. And we've got a great department. And I have made a lot of changes already policy-wise. And we're going to continue to make some changes. We will be proactive. The patrols have picked up. I don't know if you all have realized or not, but Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, we actually went all those nights without a single shots fired complaint. And that's the first time in a long time that that's happened. And I credit the police officers for getting out and doing their job. I mean, we can't make everybody happy. There's some people that just may not like law enforcement and I hate it for them because they're going to see us more. And I credit our police officers for getting out and heavily patrolling the city. And it has truly made a difference the past several nights. We did have a shots fired complaint last night, but we found out that it may have just been a bogus complaint because there was no proof that it had happened. So we're almost a week straight now without any shots fired complaints. And that's a huge deal for our city compared to the numbers that we've had in the past. And I credit our officers for that. So thank you for recognizing that. And we'll continue to work hard and move forward.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? I'm going to go ahead and call on Tom Britton. We're our quarterly code enforcement report. This is actually the inaugural quarterly code enforcement report. And I want to note, introduce Peter Wood. A lot of new council members, you don't know Peter, he's done it codes also. You'll see him a lot as you're dealing with codes. And I hope you introduce yourself, everyone, before we're done.
Thank you, Chairman Keel. Councilmembers, as the chairman said, this is the first report. We're going to share some information with you tonight. I brought Peter Wood as backup. Peter does a tremendous job in code enforcement, his team. We're going to present some information. If during the course of our presentation, there's some additional information you want to see in future reports, please let me know or let your chairman know and we'll make sure we get that in the next quarterly report. I just wanted to give you a brief overview of some of the ordinances that we enforce through code enforcement as well as talk a little bit about process because process and code enforcement is extremely important. But those list the various chapters of the city code which fall under code enforcement. And there are actually a few others that I didn't list here that are more infrequent. But these are where we see most of our code violations and our code cases that we process through our office. Some of these codes have been in existence and we have enforced for many, many years. For example, the zoning ordinance, we've enforced that since the 80s. Basic Property Maintenance Code, a little more recent, 2005, '06 era. The big change in code enforcement that occurred was approximately 2002 with the creation of the Code Enforcement Board. Prior to that, violations of our code were processed through district court as misdemeanor violations. Currently, the process goes through the Code Enforcement Board, which can impose civil fines as well as order abatements. The court system can still be involved from appeals from the Code Enforcement Board, but the establishment of the Code Enforcement Board made the process in the city much, much easier for addressing minor violations. This is kind of a snapshot of the process of code enforcement. Because code enforcement is a function of police powers, there are several constitutional provisions that apply, Fourth Amendment, Fifth Amendment, Fourteenth Amendment, state constitutional provisions, state law, as well as local process. Because ultimately, any case through code enforcement that we process could end up in the court system, district court, or potentially even circuit court, we have to make sure that our code enforcement process is on point, that we follow process and that we document cases every step of the way. But just in a nutshell, to kind of give you an overview of how this process works, we receive a complaint or we observe a violation on property. Let's say it's tall grass, weeds, et cetera. We will assign a code enforcement officer to that case. They will document the violation or alleged violation and make a determination of whether a violation exists or does not exist. If one does not exist, the case is closed. If a violation exists, one of two things potentially happens. If it is a first-time offender, property owner and property that's never been cited before, we will issue what's called a notice of violation. That's basically a warning. That gives that property owner, from the day we mail it, approximately 10 days to either cure the violation or to contact us with an acceptable timeline for correcting the violation. If that property owner doesn't contact us or the property's not abated, we'll do a second inspection. At that point, we'll issue a, we will issue a citation. In other words, that's the actual document that says that a violation occurs. If, on the other hand, this property has been identified several times, we've already issued citations or notices violation, it will go directly to citation. Once that citation is issued and we have documented based on inspection, we will post the property. Documentation will be provided to the property owner in writing. There's a seven-day response period. During that seven days, they can contest the violation and request a hearing. They can abate the violation or they can do nothing. If they contest or they do nothing, it goes before the Code Enforcement Board, either as a default judgment or we'll hold a hearing and the Code Enforcement Board will decide if the violation exists. Once it goes to Code Enforcement Board, that property owner has a couple of options. They can pay the fine and abate. The city could potentially abate, at which point a lien would be placed on the property. Or they could potentially appeal and that goes to district court. Because everything that we process through code enforcement has the potential of going to district court, the documentation that we keep and following that process is extremely important. Often they ask, how long does this process take from the standpoint of code enforcement? And the answer depends. It can be as simple as a day. In other words, we get a complaint, we go out and decide, the property owner sees us measuring their grass, the grass is cut same day. That's great. The process can take as much as a year, sometimes more. If it goes all the way through the process, there is appeal to district court or in the court system, that could take a considerable amount of time. On average, our process typically takes anywhere from about 60 to 90 days. Some cases, it's resolved a week, two weeks. Those cases that go all the way through process usually take about two to three months to get resolved to the point where the city ends up abating. This is a snapshot of this case summary from 2022, just to kind of give you some historical background. This shows the different types of violations. Most common was our garbage trash weed violations. We had over 1,000 cases in 2022. If you note on that, 560 citations, all right, that means that just shy of 500 of those cases was resolved prior to a citation being issued. In other words, we issued a notice of violation, property owner took care of it, case closed. The other 560 actually went to a citation, meaning it went before the Code Enforcement Board, either as a default judgment or hearing. Of those 560, the city ended up probably abating approximately 400 or so of those cases. But this kind of gives you the breakdown showing the prevalence of the different types of cases. Note that garbage trash weed, most frequent, basic property maintenance, we had 42 cases last year. In total, we had between 1,100 and 1,200 cases. So what has changed for 2023? Obviously, Mayor Knight has placed an emphasis on code enforcement as part of growing home, cleaning the city. So in response to that and under the mayor's direction, we've taken a number of steps to beef up citywide code enforcement. The changes that have been made, we have increased the staffing assignment level. We've gone from basically two individuals to four-plus individuals dedicated to code enforcement. We have re-instituted proactive routes, meaning we're visiting all parts of the city and doing that routinely. Proactive Basic Property Maintenance Code, where in the past, this had been more complaint-driven enforcement for Basic Property Maintenance Code, we have instituted proactive Basic Property Maintenance Code monitoring. Code enforcement meetings, there have been occasions in the past where we have had two meetings a month, usually a couple of months during the summer. We've started the two hearing dates or two board meeting dates starting this month and we will continue that, hopefully to process the cases in a quicker manner. We've also increased the visibility of our code enforcement staff out within the city. And we've taken some measures such as increasing the size and visibility of our citations that we post on property. So those are readily visible so folks know when violations are cited. So this is where we are, first quarter. And this shows, this is garbage trash weed cases. So the blue is 2022 cases, the red is 2023. And notice the sizable number and increase in the number of cases identified, cases we've started, cases we're processing. This is Basic Property Maintenance Code. And this is one of the tougher areas of code enforcement that Pete's team addresses because this deals with either residential structures or commercial structures. And basic property maintenance violation could be anywhere as simple as broken window all the way to unsafe structure. These are the cases that require the most time of our code enforcement officials. One basic property maintenance case is probably equal to 10 tall grass cases from the standpoint of time that is put into these. You can see the comparison between 2022 and 2023. This is a reflection of proactive enforcement for Basic Property Maintenance Code. I-65, this is our abandoned and junk vehicles. You can see the comparisons of that between 2022 first quarter to 2023. Substantial increase in the number of cases that we are processing. Flood and drainage, this is something we've enforced for many, many years. And this is cyclical, this just depends on how many construction projects we have going on at a particular point in time and how much it rains. This year, we're a little bit down from last year, just a reflection of how much rainfall we got last year versus this year. Zoning violations, we've enforced these since 1985 or maybe even before that. Also cyclical, approximately on the same pace. Abandoned urban property right-of-way violations, you see the increase there. That's chapters 34 and 99 of code. So all cases, these are all the cases processed within the first quarter of 2022 compared to 2023. 2022, we had 144 cases started in process at the end of March 2022. This year, March of 2023, we have 418 cases that are in process. Mr. Chairman, that is just kind of a snapshot of where we are first quarter. With continued proactive enforcement, continued staffing, we anticipate that the number of cases and issues that will be abated and addressed will be substantially higher this year than last year. Thank you, Tom. Any questions?
Yeah, Tom, thanks for the laydown that you just gave us. And I'm wondering, what percentage of all of these cases are resolved by the Code Enforcement Board?
Okay. When you say resolved by the Code Enforcement Board, explain exactly how many go to the Code Enforcement Board?
Yeah, how many of those don't end up going to district court, going to the ultimate level?
All right, well, the going to district court is somewhat rare. We have just a very small percentages of cases that will end up in district court. We've got a few right now, but very, very small fraction. If you look at the slide, for instance, grass, trash, and weed, and I gave that as an example, last year we had 1,000 cases. Those 560 cases which were citation went to the Code Enforcement Board. So a little over 50% of those cases ended up either as a default judgment or were contested by the property owner. Of those grass, trash, and weed cases, I don't think, we might have had one, but I don't think any of those went all the way to district court.
And just as a follow-on, what resources do you need to speed this process up and eliminate some of the things that hang fire?
Okay, I think there, from the standpoint of timeframe, obviously, we've implemented a few changes which I think have sped the process up some. One is the amount of staffing. And obviously, budget discussion is something for next month. But having that staffing level high enough to address the need, and I said we went from two to basically four plus. What that allows us to do is to, once we identify a violation, I can have a code enforcement officer out there very quickly. If it's a notice of violation that we issue, we can, on day 10, we're onsite to say it's been abated or hasn't and we're going the next step. With staffing of two, the problem is we have too many cases for the responsiveness to be immediate. Because a code enforcement officer, let's say they do 30 to 40 cases a month. It's not just the 30 or 40 cases a month they're dealing with at a particular given time. It's the 40 they identified the previous month that's still in process. So at any one given time, you may have maybe juggling 100 cases. So having the staffing level there, I think, speeds the timeframe because it allows us to be more responsive. The second thing is Code Enforcement Board meeting twice a month, I think, makes us more responsive because we don't have that lag we're able to process. I think, long-term, some of the issues that the city, us as a community, need to address is the lien properties. One of the issues that bogs us down tremendously in code enforcement and increases that time of turnaround just because of case volume is the number of repeat violators of grass, trash, and weed in other code citations where we are constantly having to issue repetitive citations over the course of a year. If there is an addressment of the lien properties and enforcement of those liens, that may take a dent out of the code enforcement effort that we're having to do and it will speed the process.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And I don't want to put, I may be put you on the spot, Troy, or I think even Melissa in the back, just a real quick, for some of the newer council members that may or may not know, we did approve some new software. I know y'all two probably are more well-versed about that as far as speeding things up and addressing the liens where, you know, Troy.
We are, and we want to thank the council again for the funding, for the software. One of the great things, and Doug can speak to this as well, is it's bringing us all together. Because Doug, finance, code, all of us, Mike Perry and Public Works, needed to get on the same page. Tom is right about the liens. If we don't push them all the way through, it's a toothless tiger. We're wasting our time. We've got to hold people accountable. So we are in the implementation process. It's finance and code software. Darrell and IT told us we should be there around August and we'll come back and give you an update. We are meeting informally as a small group right now, sort of a bedrock, pen and paper kind of thing to keep us all on the same page. But we are happy to see code ramped up. We are happy to see the doubling up of the code hearings board. We appreciate the mayor really pushing code. I don't think it should ever let go and back down. That's no attack on them, I don't think they should wait on the mayor. I mean, it's code, it's law, it should be enforced regardless. And I don't think we should let go. It's a tipping point where we are in this city. And you can go too far to where you just can't get it back. So code is the tip of the spear. It affects fire, it affects public works, it affects police, it affects the quality of life, it affects low income more than high income, obviously, property values, it's everything. And we need more of it, not less. Again, we thank you for the software and I think that's the beginning of the ask. It's a high-quality department that affects every aspect and every one of your, regardless of your ward, some more than others, some less than others. But we will come back to you in August and tell you where we are on that. The liens, and Melissa can get into that, we're, those numbers are, we're up to $12 million. When I got here, I was told it was $8 million. But some of it were just stacking and stacking and stacking. And you may have $50,000 on liens on a piece of property worth $1,000. So you've got to judge what that's worth to the city. Some you can maybe ignore. Some people, some piece of property may have vital importance to the city, to economic development, to safety, and we may have to go forward with it. So the software is a big step, it's a first step. But coming together and looking deeply and more strategically at code, we're going to have to keep on.
Any other questions?
I do, I have a question for Tom. Tom, I have had a few calls from constituents complaining that, you know, they make calls to CDS, don't get return calls. And so one of the things I'd like to ask is if there is a way to map those, because there may be folks that are calling in that end up being just irritation, just complainants that are whatever, they're just, you know, that kind of thing. I'd like to ask if there's a way to communicate more proactively about some of those folks, you know, with the council person.
Okay, from the standpoint of communication with CDS, there are various ways to do it, email, phone. There's also a portal on the city's website that you can go in and register a complaint. If we have missed a call, that's something we need to discuss, maybe offline, because that would be news to me.
All right. It's not a reflection on you personally, I'm just voicing to you what I've heard. So, yeah, well, we can talk about it later, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? All right, well, thank you, Tom. And like we discussed, we figured the first update would be the longest to go over and come and overview.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the information.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, just think, Mr. Handy, he spent some time with us, had code enforcement and would extend that invitation to any council member. If you're interested in what we do, how we do it, just give us a call and be glad to show you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Tom. Call on Councilmember Crabtree for our agency update and board update. Got anything for it?
Yes, I do. So I'm on three committees that the mayor's put me on. The first one is future funding, second one is the new fire station, which both of those committees have not met, uh, and the other is weather spotters. So I'm a board member of the weather spotters, um, gone out to several of their trainings, gone to several of their meetings. Uh, this is a close-knit group of individuals who are trained in how to go look at the weather patterns and see what's going on, uh, out in the community when we do have thunderstorms, potential for tornadoes and things like that. Basically, when, when that happens, they start up a, basically a command center, they send out these teams to go, uh, look and, and then try to see what weather patterns are coming in to us, report on it. Uh, a lot of that information goes to the National Weather Service. You know, we're pretty closely with David Powell, and, and I know he started a new YouTube channel that people may not be familiar with, but if there is nasty weather on our way, they will start up, uh, a YouTube channel. It's called David Powell Weather and Wisdom, and, uh, they're really focused on our area and what might be coming, so good group of folks and enjoy working with them.
All right, thank you, Councilman Crabtree. Any, we have no unfinished business to discuss tonight, so, uh, oh, wait a minute, I just skipped the quarterly business list review. I put my mark through the letter before we got there. Um, it's attached, um, in your packet. Anybody seen anything, any change, update, anything? All right, nothing there. Now we'll move along. So we'll jump right down to new business. So we have a, a call on Ms. Holly Bogus for a, uh, MDM MED Properties LLC Downtown Development Incentive Application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, committee members. Need just one second to get this pulled up. Included in your packet is, um, the application and information regarding this certificate of appropriateness, um, which is COA DT twenty-three dash three dash one, MDM MED Properties LLC, and this is, um, property owned by Mr. Hal McCoy, located at two oh-two and two oh-four East Seventh Street, which is directly across, kind of catty-cornered from where you're sitting behind you. So the map shows where the property is located, and this is in the Community Services Subdistrict of the Downtown Renaissance District. Couple of existing photographs we're gonna show you, kind of take you around the perimeter of the building. This is the existing west facade or the front of the building, um, as well as what the proposed changes will look like. Same with the existing south facade of the building, and the side elevation is shown on the right. This is the existing rear portion of the building or the east facade, and what the drawings indicate this property will look like once it's renovated. And then the north facade as well. This is the former Hotel Latham site, for any of you who might be history buffs. This is a summary of the work that, uh, Mr. McCoy is planning to undertake as part of his project. Um, you've probably all read or heard through some media outlets that this is intended to host the Krusty Pig, which will be a pizza restaurant coupled with barbecue, um, restaurant, and, um, some really good individuals locally and regionally that will be operating this. Uh, the entire perimeter of the building will be painted an alabaster color. An outdoor seating area is going to be constructed on the south side of the building. Uh, there'll be operable glass garage doors that open up into that outdoor seating area, as well as opening out into the front portion of the building that faces Virginia Street. There'll be some LED lighting placed in the parking lot, awning will be installed, signage will be installed, and some of the existing window openings will be bricked in, and then all of that will be painted one color so it has a nice, clean look. This is just a rendition of what it will look like from a color perspective once the exterior is painted. And this is a floor plan, uh, just to share with you what this property will look like on the inside. So if you look up in the very top left-hand corner, there's a bar area, uh, that seats about ten people, and then there are tables scattered throughout, uh, the area for just regular seating, and then at the bottom, um, of the screen, about midway, is where you see the outdoor seating area. Looks to be about six tables that will be able to fit out there, and then you've got restrooms, kitchen, cooler area, and then future event space for any time that they will be hosting special events. Um, this is a four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar investment in this property with twelve new jobs anticipated to be created, and again, the Krusty Pig Restaurant is scheduled to occupy this space. This proposed work does conform to the Renaissance Design Standards. It was presented to the Renaissance Design Review Board at a meeting on April tenth. They are forwarding a favorable recommendation to you. Staff is also forwarding a favorable recommendation to you for participation in the Downtown Development Incentive Program. As indicated in the memo, um, this program does provide a rebate of eighty percent of any increase in ad valorem or property tax revenue. The program allows for a period of up to twenty years for that rebate. Previous authorizations that have been authorized by City Council have been for a period of fifteen years. Uh, the program also provides for a rebate of fifty percent of payroll taxes for new jobs that are created, and that is also for a period of up to twenty years, but previous council approvals have been for a period of ten years, um, on the ones that have been presented. I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Mr. McCoy is also here if you have any questions of him.
Any questions for Bogus and Mr. McCoy? Actually, I have a quick question for, uh, you, Mr. McCoy, have, has, at the Krusty Pig, have they signed?
I'm sorry, I'm gonna mic off, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Has, uh, Krusty Pig, if they sign a lease, I mean, is this a locked-in deal, or?
You're saying, you're
I mean, I'm asking, with, with, with what we're seeing, I mean, is that? I was just wondering if the Krusty Pig is, have they, as you said, scheduled, I was just wondering if, if they
We're waiting just on final construction figures, but I've given this an estimate. You know, we've got an agreement in principle for all terms. Um, it's taken a while to prevail. I felt like they were just gonna take about two-thirds of the building and everything to me. I've been doing this for a long time in various scenarios, and sometimes you can cut your costs a little bit too much and things be too tight, and I think over time, as we've aired this thing out and talked it through, and the, the type product line that they're gonna have, and it's a pretty nice, broad menu. I think it, it, um, it attracts young people, I mean, kids who are looking for pizza and a place to go, to adults like us, I think it, it will appeal to all ages. Uh, so, at the end of the day, they agreed to take the other side of the building. We, uh, redid the construction drawings to accommodate that. That was really pretty minor. It was really behind the, the wall and the kitchen line where the service areas are, storage areas, coolers are, offices. That was expanded a good bit so that they do have room to grow and really perform their task like they need to. You know, this is a building that, um, I guess it's been about a three-year project. It's something I could have leased up some time ago, but I felt like that I really wanted to stay with something that I felt like would be, uh, net-net positive to the city, would bring people downtown, uh, more often, more festive, uh, just, you know, a, a bigger plus. And I think with, uh, Mindy Hargrove and, uh, Mallory Lawrence, uh, they are two dynamic women who have so much energy, they've got a lot of talent, and I think that they will energize it, and, um, the structure itself, um, I think is really, really cool, it's very attractive, it's, it's just got an energy that, you know, it's, I think it's gonna be really good, and I think we've got the right people. And I think if you wait long enough and you hang in there, hopefully, good things do happen, and I'm really excited about this project. All of these projects, I'll be straight up, any of these projects I've been involved in, whether it's the Mixer, uh, the New Era, uh, the Krusty Pig, you have to have a love for your city, your infrastructure downtown, you have to have a love for these buildings because the economics to make these things work are hard. And if you think you're really gonna make, uh, a typical return, don't get in it. I mean, you're just doing it because you, I'm kind of willing my way through. I'm sixty-eight, I wanna spend my time trying to help our downtown. I sold my house in Deepwood and moved downtown, so I'm totally committed, and that's kind of what I'm gonna plan to kind of continue to focus on. And I'd like to thank you all for the incentive packages that you put together. They are vital, they are very important, and, um, you know, these are just tough to do. But at the end of the day, when you see it on the screen, it is pretty exciting when you, once you get there, and I'm hoping that our population will support it. Um, I, I think it's got a good, strong place and, uh, hopefully a bright future. Thank you.
Can, can we go back a page?
Yeah.
On the screen?
I'll get you next.
Yeah, go, I'm sorry.
No, you can go ahead. How far back would you like to go, Councilman Crabtree?
Pardon me?
So I guess my question is, it, it looks like not to exceed twenty years on both of them, and it looks like previous were fifteen and ten. What's different with this than what has been done previously?
It's just the council has the discretion to review these on a case-by-case basis and make a determination what the term of the incentive will be. So you have the flexibility to go up to twenty years, but the ones that have been presented have been approved at fifteen and at ten.
So is there, is there any additional benefit value to the city with this particular project than, than the others?
You're asking me?
Either one.
Let, let me ask you this. Prior to, they're taking it over, or all of them done over twenty years?
No, they were done. The ones for downtown have been approved at fifteen and ten, all of them for downtown. The investment amount changes, um, so, um, an email was sent out to you all that gave you kind of an idea of what those investment amounts were. So I'm gonna say that the, the smallest investment that was made was one hundred and forty thousand dollars, and the largest one that we have seen thus far has been one point seven million dollars. So that's your range.
Okay.
And it's ranged from, um, twelve, uh, twenty-plus or minus full-time and part-time jobs to, um, some didn't even submit for the payroll tax rebate because they didn't have a tenant lined up, and they didn't know how many new jobs would be created.
So Holly, um,
Councilmember Meeks, uh, Councilor, we had, go ahead, Amy.
Okay, uh, I was, first of all, I really do want to commend you, Mr. McCoy. This is so exciting. I mean, really, I think when it flashes on the screen, I mean, for me, it pulsates my veins, and I think, yes, let's do something great downtown. But honestly, what I wanted to say is I want to make a motion that we forward this to council, doing previously what we've done in the past, the fifteen and ten. So that's my motion.
Second.
Now, we got a motion and a second, we got.
And that now
So now, now we'll go back to you, uh, Councilmember Meeks.
Okay, so forgive this question. My mama told me one time, she said, "Son, you're not the sharpest knife in the drawer." So, did it take the extra authorization of five percent on the, uh, program rebate, the taxes and all that, to get the business to come here, or was this a result of us overshooting the percentage, and we didn't need to do that?
I was, I'm, I'm just gonna digress. The Mixer Restaurant, whatever I named, whatever number I gave you, it costs twice that. Twice. And I'm, I, I'll be under the rest of my, my life, but it was worth it. This one I've got at four twenty-five, it will be more. I've used, I used to come in on the lower end. The mi, the Mixer building was, um, major renovation, and it was, uh, I mean, it was striking in every aspect of all the things that you had to do to put it in a, in a state that you could see today and enjoy going there. I mean, it was very elevated, and we did it right. Um, my intent is to do the same thing with this. I think four, four, I don't even know what we put down for the Mixer. I was trying to read this.
Nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand plus.
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 Well, it wasn't twice that, but it was, it was a good number. Uh, this one I've got at four twenty-five, I think it will be, uh, a fair amount more than that. Uh, they're, they are taking more space. Uh, that, we're gonna, it's gonna be retro. Uh, uh, the tenant is also making some improvements, you know, and that kind of helps. We're kind of working this process together, and you're asking me on the incentives, are they important? My answer is on that very, very much so. Um, for a guy that, I'll never see the return on the Mixer in my lifetime. Uh, on this one, um, I don't think it's gonna be quite the arduous task, because I've got a building and a shell that I've, I've gone on and put a new roof on and done some work inside. I fixed it structurally earlier, so I've kind of done it over time, so I'm just not getting hit totally upfront for everything. It's, you know, time has a way to help you do more. Um, I think the incentives are vital. I think they send a message to developers, uh, to entrepreneurs, to people who are trying to make our community a, a better place to live, to improve our lifestyle. I mean, it, it's critical path, and every little bit helps, and I would answer one hundred percent, yes, they are good, and they are important. And these are retail. I'm also, you all did approve my, my, uh, Sibley Townhouse, Townhouse projects, and also the Sanderson, and, I mean, you're talking about, uh, Sanderson's is a two and a half acres, and Sibley's three and a half. Sibley's gonna have fifty units, Sanderson's gonna have thirty-two, but over, even on Sanderson, you're putting in stormwater, you're doing things underground, you're incurring a lot of cost, and it takes a long time to ever see anything real. My son will see it. That's probably a lot of the reason why I'm doing it, and I, I want him to come back here. I mean, it's, it's really kind of my passion, and maybe one little point I'd say, I always check in with my wife, Elizabeth, like, is it okay to do another one of these? Because she kind of has to kind of sign off, and we're both in this thing together.
So you gotta get approval there before you come here.
Well, yeah, we, we just had to be together. Now, if you take a project, you know, if you're doing something on Fort Campbell Boulevard, then it's a totally different creature, and it's got the traffic and the dynamics. I'm dealing with entrepreneurial-type people. They're running small businesses, and I'm in the highest quote-unquote risk category restaurants, and then I'm dealing with entrepreneurs on top of that. It's not a franchise. But I really relish working in that area because that's where the creativity is, and, you know, our community needs more people who use their gray matter and their creativity to help make us a better place. And, and I hope that you all support Mallory and Mindy, and, uh, I certainly will, and I appreciate the staff and everyone else who helps do the presentation and, and you all that helped make this possible.
Just if I might, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Councilmember Martin.
Any idea of timeframe, like as far as your construction and?
Um, well, we had a little hookup on the Mixer when the tornado hit us.
Yeah.
And I'm kind of ahead on that schedule. Uh, John Moss with Eagle Construction, I think most of, all of you all know, local, very solid. He's agreed to take both of them on, um, and so we're gonna, I, I'm, I'd like to have the Mixer open well before Thanksgiving, so we're really gonna be working hard, 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 and I kind of divided some of that work up, and then on the other one, um, we're gonna just have to do our best, and it will be done, but hopefully, I don't even want to put a time.
I know.
I just, we're gonna get done as quickly as we can. We just have some overlap there, may get some breaks. Um, uh, they would like to be open sooner than later, too, so I'm just not, I really can't commit, because I wouldn't be
You never know.
Sounds good.
Councilmember Martin, you have a good question on this motion.
Same question, okay, so we've got a, did you have something else? We got, we have a motion and a second.
I just wanted to respond to Councilmember Meeks' question as well. Um, this program was modeled after a residential incentive program, and I think that is why the twenty years was put in, because the residential incentives also authorized for those rebates to be over a twenty-year period.
My whole thought on it was that you're looking at a four, five hundred thousand, maybe five fifty, uh, project, and I know that we have, uh, higher percentage for two or three, four million dollar, uh, investment for businesses coming in, so I would just, you know, just, you just look at the percentages and you're, you're saying, okay, we've got, we've got, uh, 400 employees coming in, we're given a payroll tax break. And, and that's smart, doing incentives like that to bring in a large business. So I've, I'm just looking at the numbers is all I'm doing and, and trying to learn.
I would say that I've got 425, it'd be easy, 550. And then they've got some additive things that, they got a lot of equipment that goes in there. I mean, you're going to be 750, 8, 850. I mean, you get all the way in there, you're in there pretty deep. Um, the, um, payroll tax is accretive to the city. It also helps the developer. I mean, it is shared. Um, so it is a plus plus. Um, I'm hoping that they're going to be more successful. They told me 12 to 14. I put in 12 being conservative. We've added that additional space. I'm hoping it's 15 or 16. The more people we can employ, the better it's going to be and the more vivacious and more going on. Uh, the property tax is just going to be a parrot out of what it is. And, um, regardless of the scale, it's, it's probably pretty equitable, no matter the large or the small. For the amount that you put in, you get a certain return that's, you know, it's, it's tiered and it matches up, I think. And to answer your question, I sat around the table with Ray Cobb many, many times. And we've talked about what really is going to make Hopkinsville go. And it's one thing, jobs, jobs, jobs. And for the first time in a long time, we've got significant industrial jobs coming. And that overlay helps, but people don't have to move here. You know, so we have to continue to do the things that we need to do to attract them to, to come here because we're in a very competitive market. And the more things we do, I think net, 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 we build more muscle. And we're, and I'm hoping in 20 years, we're going to look a whole lot different than we are today. I mean, and I think that's why you all are here today.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy.
We're hitting that point now.
All right. Well, we do have a motion in a second for this incentive. Oh, you're fine. And by the way, you're a great choice and shirt tonight. So, uh, so, uh, anyway, we do have a motion in a second on the floor. The, the motion comes from Craig, be sure I'm correct, 15-year on the, uh, property tax, 10 on the occupational. All right. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That one passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, next item is going to be the Trail of Tears commemorative park tree trimming. Uh, going to call on, uh, councilmember Meek, who is our city council representative on the airport board. Go over that real quick.
Okay, it's, um, just to give you a quick laydown. So when you, you develop a runway, you've got to have a, uh, what's called a glide slope elevation. It goes in and goes out on that runway. So if there's any obstacles at a certain level of footage, they've got to be taken out. So, uh, Mayor Knight and, um, my brother over here, he went ahead and met with William Outlaw and, uh, also Tim Moss. And then also an engineer who, uh, knows about the FAA requirements for glide slope, et cetera. And sat down and had a come to Jesus meeting with the commission of the Trail of Tears. And it was very amenable. And, uh, what we worked out was we didn't have to have lawyeries issues, um, for aviation easements or anything like that. And, uh, there was a handshake agreement made where they would allow us to trim the trees at the appropriate height according to FAA requirements. And then also any of the debris that comes off of that, the trees, the chipping, et cetera. It's going to be laid in the pathways of the Trail of Tears. And if we have to do a clear cut on anything, uh, they want us to leave stumps for historicity or whatever the rationale is. And so it was a very good meeting and we resolved a five to 10-year problem with a half hour to 45-minute meeting.
It's a 12 years is what, what Mr. Outlaw told me today.
Yep. So anyway, that's, that's it in a snapshot.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yeah, so my question was about time and the period of use. That if we cut the trees, uh, the city will be, will pay for the cost of the cutting? Is that what it is?
Uh, we have not determined who's going to pay for what. All we're doing is entering a municipal order that the Trail of Tears is giving us permission to top trees in a mentally evasive manner that is to the FAA guidelines.
I got you. Do we have any idea about how long that will be good for?
Uh, this, it will be good from now until a council down the road wants to change it away. We will follow this municipal order until somebody changes their mind. Motion.
Second.
A motion.
Second.
Uh, Don Marsh on the motion.
Thank you.
Second, and a question from Ms. Francis.
Um, does the, um, tree cutting affect anybody's personal properties?
No, it's all in the Trail of Tears parks.
All of it is on there. So no one lives in that area at all.
No, I mean, it's, it's, uh, the trees that, that this is, uh, concerned are trees on the Trail of Tears park. Anything that was outside of this, that's between the airport and that property owner. And I think they are in good shape on that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, we've got a motion to send this on forward to council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm going to call on Tom Britton for the fiscal year 23, 24, community block grant budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council members, you have in your packet, uh, municipal order. Uh, the city of Hopkinsville is an entitlement community and each year receives an allocation from, uh, housing and urban development. Uh, historically, uh, this allocation has over the years declined. Uh, it is presently, uh, 263,110 dollars as of this year. That's down about $10,000 from last year. As part of our receipt and part of our administration of community development block grant funds, we are required to submit two primary documents annually. One is the action plan, uh, which sets out, uh, what we're going to do, uh, upcoming year as well as a caper, which is basically the year-end report. Uh, the annual action plan is coming due. Uh, the municipal order would authorize the mayor to execute, uh, necessary documents for us to submit the action plan to HUD. The budget is substantially similar to last year. The only change has been the reduction of $10,000, which has been distributed proportionally, with the exception of the section 108 loan repayments, which we have no flexibility on. Mr. Chairman, if any council members have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Now we'll entertain a motion forward to council.
I'll move.
Second.
Travis and Tommy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, I'm going to call on our own Mayor Knight and Troy Body on the Small Business Commission. Gentlemen, you have the floor. Make the best use out of it. Sit up straight, Troy, to work.
As part of the mayor's growing home, um, we're looking inward and trying to strengthen infrastructure and various things across the city, uh, for fortitude as we go forward in the future. As you guys know, on this council and this city, everybody in the city knows. And let's just say, for example, EDC and Industrial Foundation, they can come here and take you into closed session and discuss the needs of business owners for the park and ask for certain things and negotiate deals. We're trying to give a voice to small business owners in this city to be able to do something similar. The mayor is asking for a council of 13 individuals. And it's not just downtown, it's the entire city. And we're looking for business owners with real skin in the game. Those who have had sleepless nights in trying to make payroll or those who, you know, just like Hal is talking, he has put his, his fortune and his family in, into something he may never see a return on in his lifetime. We're looking for a small business commission that'll give a voice to these business owners in this city that hopefully, once a year during budget season like now, they will come to the city and to this council with recommendations that would help strengthen them and help them thrive in our city. It may be more incentives. It may be asking you to remove regulations. We don't know what they may ask. Uh, but we're only looking for those who are, obviously, their taxes are paid and they have a license. They're operating functional small business in this town. The mayor would appoint them, you would approve them, and we will staff it. Uh, and hopefully by this time next year, bring them forward to present to you what they believe would help them in thriving and help this environment so that people can come here and thrive in their small businesses. We have not formally announced this, but I can tell you they're already calling the city and asking the mayor, hey, I, can this person be on it? Can that person be on it? Uh, we want it to be very representative of all types of small businesses. Just like Hal said, I mean, restaurant games, your heart's got to be in it. That's not for the Meek. Um, and, and what can we do? Sometimes it's not what we can give. Sometimes it's how can we as a city maybe get out of their way? And we want to hear that too. We're asking for your support to forward this on to council and let us get this started in the next budget session.
Motion.
Second.
We got a motion. Marsh, who'd I hear over here?
Great idea.
Uh, councilmember Bell? Any, any questions for anybody?
No, it's a great initiative for small businesses.
I'm just going to say, and I'm sure councilmember Bell is a, another small business owner. Uh, we appreciate this coming forward and, uh, don't forget the guys in the small business in the trades when you put the, uh, thing together. We may not have buildings, but we got a lot going on out there. So, uh, that being said, we have a motion forward this to council.
I have a question.
One more comment.
One question. Um, pertaining to, uh, the people who can be in, um, not the, uh, the 13 members. Um, example, we do have some people that are city councils that has a business. Can they be involved in, um, being part of this, not as a 13, but as being, uh, part of the, uh, benefits of it?
I would say this, I would ask, once there is a chair establishing a board and they may come across with some more regulations and rules, that they should be able to call whomever they want. We wouldn't want to do anything to tie their hands right now. We want them to take this and run it. We have no intentions or interest in micromanaging.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Marsh?
I'm going to take one second because I'm a pastor to speak up on behalf of the churches in the area that, you know, we, we have a, a good number of churches in Hopkinsville and Christian County. They're small business, they're small employers, less than 100 members. Please don't forget that.
All right. Motion, seconds on the floor. All in favor, send it to council.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next up, I will call on myself for the legislative travel budget. Uh, if y'all recall, we had a conversation about this probably back in, uh, what was it, October, maybe? And, uh, really, really kind of left it right there. You know, actually I'd, I'd pulled it off the business list, um, back in February. Um, however, um, it came up about a month or so ago that the travel budget for council is out of money. So, uh, going off of, uh, and we saw an email from councilmember Martin of usage of, of kind of breaking it down by, by person. Um, few of us talked, um, not going to call any names, and several of us talked and said, hey, we just want to be sure everybody has an equal opportunity to, uh, uh, go places that they want to. Nobody that, that hadn't spent, you know, if, if you've spent like 300 bucks and out of the budget and you want to go somewhere and all of a sudden you, there's no money available for you because somebody else may have spent, I don't know, 35, 3600, um, then, uh, that's a problem. So this has been out there, I think. Everybody's had it in their packet. Um, anybody got any questions on that?
No, it's just right.
Okay.
Yep.
Motion forward to council.
Second.
Motion from, uh, councilmember Martin. I'm going, I'm going to give this to, uh, to, uh, councilmember Craig. And, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are going to move right to, uh, did I get to call my buddy Dave Herndon? For, uh, we're going to go ahead and we're going to combine F and G. You're going to talk about Donna Drive, we'll vote on that, then we'll go right into Sibley.
Right. Uh, just very quickly, um, the reason you all may be wondering why you're looking at stop signs, Hopkinsville code ordinance says you are required to look at stop signs or fire lanes or no parking zones, things like that. So you all get to be on the hook for that, but we have to, with the manual on uniform traffic control devices says that a study has to be done to look at the placement of traffic control devices. So, uh, that's the reason, uh, you all have it, have these two requests before you today. Uh, the individual request, the first one, Mark Drive, uh, this came to us as a result of a speed hump request from, uh, councilmember Crabtree. Uh, I believe it was last month he brought that to us. And I propose kind of a, kind of an alternative to put always stop signs at Mark, at each intersection of Mark Drive. Uh, just pull it up very briefly if you all are unfamiliar with it. Which country club, you guys see that? You got Country Club Lane, the north intersection and south intersections of Mark Drive. Um, that we all, we always take a couple, few things into consideration. Uh, crash data, any traffic incidents, there's only been a couple. Uh, traffic volume, it's not unusual for a, um, an area like this. Uh, speeding, speeding is not necessarily an issue. Uh, but there were, obviously, you're going to have, anywhere you're going to have, uh, anywhere you have a long straight, straightaway like that, you're going to have knuckleheads that, uh, exceed the speed limit. One thing we did, uh, I, the second page of the memo under traffic circulation, one thing we did add is, and I'll address this when it comes to councilmember Meeks' request, is one thing that occurred to us is we thought that people would use the southernmost center because they didn't want to go through these four-way stop, these are, excuse me, not all, not four-way stops, always stops. It's T-intersections. Um, people might cut through the southernmost intersection or the southernmost portion of Donna Drive to get around right there. So we're also proposing an always stop at Sheila Drive. So this would be a, uh, always stops at both intersections of Mark Drive, both the east, both the east and the west or north and, north and south, and the intersection of Sheila Drive and Donna Drive. Um, if you have any questions, be more than happy and try and answer them. Uh, again, this is, uh, we've, we've had several complaints from the southernmost stretch of Donna Drive. We've got, we put up a pedestrian sign there, I want to say, two years ago. Um, but we know that there's, that speed is an issue and this is our counter, counterproposal to councilman Crabtree's proposal because we try to avoid speed hunts when it's absolutely necessary, so.
Any questions on, need a motion to forward that to council?
A motion.
Second.
Martin? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Davis, bring us home there on item G.
All right. Uh, lastly, uh, this is a request, uh, that came to us, uh, from councilmember Meek. Um, this is over on Sibley Road. Let me pan there just briefly. Uh, been a lot of, you all probably know, there's been a lot of, uh, construction in that area. And if you go down Sibley Road, again, it's a big, long stretch of road. Big wide, nice wide road where you can build up a really good amount of speed. Uh, so, uh, this picture doesn't really represent the amount of growth. If you've been back in there, you've got Jockey subdivision to the, to the west. Uh, this is just the first phase of Jockey subdivision and now it's almost in, it's almost built out. I think it's very close to being built out. Um, so what we are proposing, we took a look at the, the traffic counts and the speed, the trap, the, the, and, uh, uh, traffic incidents, uh, from HPD. Uh, there were four in the past six months. Thought that was probably a little unusual for that type of area. If I had to guess, it's probably due to the construction. Um, so going through that speeds, uh, we use our traffic counter to, traffic counter to, uh, do this information. Uh, we got about 2,000 vehicle, vehicle trips per day. That's, again, that's about the same, uh, same amount. Um, they, that's the same amount you're going to see on, in that type of area. Speed data, it's a little bit higher, uh, in that area because I think you've got a little bit, uh, longer stretch to build up a good, good amount of speed. We did studies of both Sheridan and South Sheridan. Uh, Sheridan, uh, speeds were higher, uh, down at South Sheridan, which is the southern intersection. Uh, speeds were a little bit lower because a lot of the traffic was turning into South Sheridan, so they slowed down. Um, but what we are recommending, uh, that is not in your memo that councilman Meek emailed us about. I think he recommended, uh, pickets, but I think we are going to offer a counterproposal and say, uh, we would like to, we could recommend installation of always stops at Sheridan Circle, South Sheridan Circle, and to keep people from cutting through, just like over on, uh, Donna at Early Drive, which is a good kind of, uh, kind of in the middle area before, uh, you get to, uh, back to Jockey subdivision. Jockey's just a two-way, two-way stop. This is a through street on Sheridan Circle going to the cul-de-sac. So everybody coming out of Jockey does have to stop at that intersection. So they would have to go through two stop signs, one way or the other, so. If you have any questions, I'll be happy, more, more than happy to try and answer.
I got one. So speaking of the construction traffic back there, do you have any paving?
Yeah, it's, we, there is some development that's gonna take place in that area. So what we're, what our, me and Mike's plan is, is to wait until Jockey is built out, which is getting there. It's not gonna be this fiscal year, but we're probably gonna pave from Sheridan Circle or Bruce View, which is just north of there. Uh, because I think there is some proposed development at the end of Bruce View. I may, we may need to get with CDS on that, but a possible extension of Bruce View Circle. But we don't want to, we don't wanna, we don't wanna pave where they're gonna be building because they have torn that road all to pieces. Um, so, uh, we're at a minimum going to look at fiscal year, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five, which is always weird to start talking about next, next year. Uh, paving from Sheridan Circle all the way down to the new section. Uh, probably, uh, Sheridan Circle and South Sheridan Circle. Um, and we, and I'll have to look at, at what the condition is between South Sheridan and where the new section of Sibley, Sibley is in the bag, so.
Especially to tell people to be patient, let that.
Yeah, I mean, we've talked, we've talked to them, everybody's been extremely, uh, extremely patient with us back there. They recognize that, you know, they, our trucks go through there weekly, uh, looking for, looking for.
I got, I got chewed out by somebody that lives back there and she happens to be my sister.
Oh, I know. She lives, uh.
Call her council member.
Uh, yeah, she lives, uh, right, well, anyway, she lives right, she's in that picture. I know exactly where she lives.
I heard your council member told her to call you.
That's right. Yeah. But, uh, now the, uh, that's, we are looking at paving back there, uh, because they've torn the road up and then we'll probably, as construction, uh, reduces, we'll probably kinda have to piecemeal that paving. So because they're, you know, Hal's building up there at the intersection, Sibley and Sibley, so. So, um, so we'll have to piecemeal that, but hopefully at the end of the day, everybody will have a pretty decent road in front of their eyes, so.
Um, back to the stop signs there, Travis. Um, we got any questions, motions?
I was gonna make a motion.
Second.
I can't.
You?
I just had a question. I just wanted to thank.
Okay, let's do this. I've got, I've got, I'm in trouble with the motion. Danny was, I'll forgive.
Yeah, there you go.
So, go ahead and take it.
I just wanted to thank you, Dave, for, uh, I had one of the individuals that lived in that section give me a call. I waited about a day and a half before I responded to the call. And when I called them up, they said, well, we don't have a problem now because they paved that section of the road and it was all fixed.
Well, we, we did concrete and, and concrete and asphalt don't mix a lot of times, uh, but, but, uh, it's, it's like peanut butter, trying to mix peanut butter and water. But, uh, but we got that section done and when we, when we're able to pave, that will be part of it. And hopefully you'll have a nice continuous.
Thank you for acting quick also on the stop signs because, um, people were pulling into their driveways and people were NASCAR-ing right around them. So at least with these brakes in here, you're gonna slow down the traffic somewhat. So thank you.
All right, we got a motion and a second on the floor on the stop signs. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that one passes right along. Anything under other? Saying nothing, have any motions to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Everyone in favor of adjourned?
Aye.